I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we please take the roll?
Mayor Kay.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
President.
Councilmember Zelinski.
Here.
Councilmember Goodsky.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gustad.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
And city engineer.
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. This isn't having an agenda-related items. Is there anybody who would like to comment on tonight's agenda? Seeing now, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue expenses, and notification regarding next work session.
How should we approve the consent agenda stated?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Goodsky, supported by Councilmember Smith, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any comments? Seeing now, we please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gustad?
Yes.
And Mayor Kay.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of the MSDDA budget amendments for fiscal year 2014-15. Manastee Main Street Downtown Development Authority is required by state law to ensure that actual expenditures do not exceed budgeted amounts. Proposed budget amendment addresses expenditures to avoid any year-end negative budget variances. At this time, council could take action to adapt the budget.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Have a motion by Councilmember Whitlock, supported by Councilmember Goodsky, to approve the budget amendments for the Main Street Downtown Development Authority. Is there any comments or questions?
Yes, I do think it would be nice if Patrick Kay could come forward and maybe talk about it a little bit.
Patrick Kay is the director for Manastee Main Street Downtown Development Authority. Is there anything in particular that you'd like me to go over?
Well, we've had quite a discussion on it. I think it would be worthwhile to do that again a little bit. And in addition, if you have a correction to your amended budget where it doesn't say proposed budget fiscal year 2015 to 2016, I think that would be appropriate for you to make that change. It's being submitted with this paperwork tonight.
Sure. As it states on there, it has proposed budget 2015-2016, which is inaccurate. It was the proposed budget for 2014-2015, and it was incorrectly printed or incorrectly left on there. I thought it was worked on other budgets at the time. And I can resent that to council with that change on the title there. But everything else on there is correct.
I have a question for Mr. Saylor. I understand that we have an ordinance describing the creation of the DDA and describing when budgets are due. And the budget for the DDA is supposed to be presented at the same time the city council budget is presented. I think there's an implication in there, at least I would think that there's a bit of an implication, that an amendment to a budget should be done before the new budget is presented. So this change is six months late, and I appreciate all the time that you've spent trying to explain that. But we may, my comment right now is I think perhaps there must be some misunderstanding why this is so late. I mean, sorry, I still have a bad hole. I don't think we should, it's not acceptable to me to be presented with an amendment that's six months late, when I think the implication is it should have been done prior to July 1st of 2015. And I think it would be prudent for us maybe to tighten up that ordinance so that there would never be a misunderstanding about this again. So that's one of my comments.
They did have their budget, yet their budget is part of their budget that we approved. And so that was submitted for approval. There, you're in, they don't have all the final information. So to have their final and changes before their new budget is approved is not really possible. I mean, they probably do one, but then they probably have to come back and do another one by the time all the actuals did come in.
Isn't that also common practice, that if we see something that's changed in the budget, we can make that change before the fiscal year ends?
What I'm saying is, yeah, they can probably, they can tighten that up. We've got, you know, Patrick is fairly new to the DDA. They've had new board members. Yes, this is too late, but I know they're working on, they've had to change offices and stuff, so I know they're working on trying to tighten up their budget. Yes, I would agree that this is a little too late, and I'm sure the DDA will work on tightening up those changes and submitting some proposed changes before the new budget season.
Normally, these amendments are done prior to the end of the fiscal year.
I know.
And you're correct, and they should have come to the council and been approved to council by June 30th of 2015. And by law, it should have been. And when it came close to the end of the fiscal year, the board felt, did not know the statute that we had to have it in by June 30th, and tried to take some extra time to finish it. And then unforeseen circumstances came up and it kind of delayed a little more. Knowing that this is a state law moving forward, this will be sent to city council. If there's amendments to be made, it'll be sent to city council well before your June meetings to give you ample time to review the amended budget so that we don't run into this again. This was incorrect on the DDA boards and myself, and this won't happen again. We will make sure to have the amended budget, if we have to amend the budget, done and completed and submitted to city council before June of next year.
Mr. Saylor, if you don't mind, I don't think there really is a state law that requires the DDA to do that. It's just by our ordinance.
In the state law and the ordinance, which mirror one another, require this body, council, to approve the budget. It doesn't speak, though, about what about amendments? And I think what Mr. Kay is stating is what the city's policy is, and Mr. Bradford, as the council is aware, will bring an amended budget to council before the end of fiscal year. Seems to me that that probably makes sense for the DDA as well, and I guess that's what you're indicating.
Yes.
Okay, in this circumstance, then, because it is so late, and there is actually real no penalty to it.
I guess the answer, then, is we should have a better control and better policy of that, and maybe not a written policy, but a policy that the DDA is going to match what the city does in regard to amendment of its budget, and get the proposed amendments to council for its consideration before the end of June.
I think that would be wise.
We have every intention to, I mean, to do that. We just didn't know that we could not bring it to council after the fact. We now know that, that is in our records. Going forward, this won't happen again.
I appreciate that, and I trust that you'll remember that. But I think from my personal perspective, I'm going to sleep better if I vote no on this. That's just the way I feel. I might feel differently if you come forward before the end of this current fiscal year with an amendment to this fiscal year's budget, which you've already stated is probably going to be $10,000. You're going to be $10,000 over budget, so we're going to be looking for that. I think I'd be more comfortable waiting.
I understand.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you. Shall I please, thank you, Patrick. Can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gustad?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
No.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
And Mayor Kay.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now, so move on to notices, communications, and announcements. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear from Mr. Michael Terry, who will report on the activities at the Ramsdale Theater and respond to any questions the council may have.
Good evening, Mayor Kay, council members. Thank you for giving me a chance to talk about the Ramsdale Theater. Let's see. Trying to get used to Google. There we go. Operations, we became a city department this past year with the presenting of Chapter 253, staffing is by the city, programming is our partners, the Manastee Art Institute and the civic players, and also the city. Maintenance is provided by the city, and administration is by the city, and fundraising is done by Friends of the Ramsdale and the executive director, Michael Terry. I think I know that person. Oh, whoops. Staff, executive director, myself, we have one part-time caretaker. We also have site managers who are on call for specific events. Our technical people are contracted as needed, depending on the kind of shows we're doing. And then we also have volunteers who do the ushering and take care of the box office. And a lot of our volunteers come from the civic players. They're really gracious in providing that help. City staff, all the backend at Bradford, of course, oversees the whole thing, and I report to him. Accounts receivable, receivable, all the maintenance, all that stuff is done through the city. So those are all things that are soft costs that support what we do over there. Facility usage, we have offices in the Ramsdale for the civic players, for the Art Institute, for myself and the caretaker. The civic players also have a prop room, a scene shop, a costume storage area. MAI has a storage area, and in the Ramsdale, we also have a storage area as well. And this past year, in 2015, the calendar year, the theater was used 265 days, so the 360 days, five days available, very busy space. The ballroom, 159 days, and a lot of that is from Ingrid Bond and her classes. She has dance classes Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday up in the ballroom, so that's included in there. Hardy Hall's used 132 days, about 77 percent, and the classroom is only used about 11 percent. So we have some opportunity there to use them more. So that's something that we need to look into. Maintenance products, we had a lot of maintenance things happen this year, and I think the facility is in some of the best condition since I've been there. We've had the windows cleaned. The first street entrance just got painted and the floor taken care of. The stage floor got painted recently, is looking really good. We had the act curtain updated. There was a hole in it, and we had an outside vendor come in and touch that up, and that's been taken care of. And we also have a gentleman coming in, in fact, tomorrow, touching up the paint in the theater. Some of the, we had some water damage on the stenciling up in the theater, and so that's being taken care of. It's really starting to look good. The marquee has been a project that's a couple of years going, and still needs some more work, but hopefully we'll finish it this next summer. The Manastee Civic Players are the biggest part of the Ramsdale. They had six productions in 2015, did 33 performances. I've estimated their ticket sales based on what they've paid us, the rent paid, to be about $68,000. And from that, I figured their attendance was about 4,200. I asked for the information, but they were busy, they weren't able to give it to me. So I think their attendance is around 4,200 people, and they seem to have about 150 to 200 people that are either acting or being in set design or scene design. So they're a very active group. And they, so far this year, they've paid $13,683 in calendar year 2015. Second biggest user of the Ramsdale is the Manastee Art Institute. They had four exhibits this last year. Carrie Schubach was gracious enough to give me their attendance. They had about 1,600 visitors and about 60 artists engaged, and they showed about 180 pieces of art. They used to do a lot of classes, too, at the Ramsdale, and some of that has moved downtown into the, on River Street, they have a gallery down there. So more of their classes have moved down there. And so they're not quite as active as they used to be at the Ramsdale, but they're still very active. Classes and workshops, we have Ingrid Bond, who, as I mentioned, does dance classes Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, just about every week. And then Annette Jervisik, after she had some issues, personal issues, she resumed classes in September, and she teaches music classes in Hardy Hall, violin, piano, and I think she had singing classes as well. The Ramsdale, the city also presents, we did, what, seven different productions in calendar year 2015. And this slide is kind of painful for me to look at, to be quite honest. Those first two, which were in last fiscal year, Rainbow Fish, which was done by Arts Power, was really a good show, but we only gave, we did 28 people there, and that's really disappointing, because I really would love to bring them back. The people that were there had a really great time, and it was a very good show, nice production company. But 28 people, we need to find another way of doing it, find partners, we need to do something different. Glenn Miller Orchestra, great success, sold out. Spent a lot of money on advertising. That $2,000 loss, that's our loss. Wish our community college lost $2,000, too. So we had a sold-out performance and we lost $4,000. That's really painful. You know, we spent way too much on advertising for that event. And so we got the people there, but financially, it's not, I like to make money sometimes. Those first through March 28th, those are all in last fiscal year, and because of Jeff Daniels and Ingrid Bond, the nutcracker, we came out as far as presenting, we came up just a little bit above budget. So even though we had those big losses there for the season last year, we were able to just about break even. And this year, so far, we're just a little bit above break even. And that's kind of the challenge with presenting. You need to find the right performance, get a good name, you know, and if it's the right name, like with Joshua Davis, we made a little money, didn't have to do a lot of advertising. With some of the other things, maybe we should have spent more advertising. Don't know if it would have worked. Couple of upcoming events, I've been kind of being very careful about programming events because of the market study. I wanted to be able to reflect that in the kind of programs that we presented. But we did go ahead, and I have contracts out for Marion Pico and the Utes Guitar Duo, really good artists, if you go online and check them out, they do a great job. For February 13th, a Valentine's Day effort. And then we also had a group out of Ann Arbor, Nessa, which is a Celtic group, really great music. And that's just to go back a little bit, all these events, all of these were fantastic performances. If any of you had a chance to attend any of them, I mean, they were really good performances. I just need to find a way to get more people to come to them, to find some way to finance them, so we at least break even or hopefully make some money. We also are presenting the Met Opera. We did 10 Met Opera broadcasts this past year. Tendons, 276, that averaged about 27 people. We split the gate with the Met Opera, so that 997, that's our half of the ticket sales, doesn't include, you know, overhead. We have another six, when I say overhead, my time, cleaning time, that sort of thing, so that's not figured into that. And we have six upcoming broadcasts this, next year, rest of this year. Rentals, that's one of the areas that if we could do those every day, we would be financially in good shape. We have 14 events in the ballroom, six in the theater, and we have 10 rentals booked through spring. We do have an endowment for restoration at the Manastee County Community Foundation, about $57,000, and that's set up for restoration purposes. And we were able to, we pulled about $2,000 out this year to take care of the curtain and do some painting. And we also set up a community fund this year to fund the study, the feasibility study for the Ramsdale. And as of 9/30, we had a balance of 6253 in that. Fundraising, we launched our second annual giving campaign this past November, and today we've got 39 donations, $7,740 to date, and that's through Friends of the Ramsdale, which is a 501(c)(3), and that's where people have to donate to be able to take a tax deductible. I know we have a donations line in the city of Manastee budget, but all the monies have been going to the funds of Friends of the Ramsdale, and that money will be transferred to the city of Manastee at some point, depending on the Friends of the Ramsdale Board when they want to do that. That's up to them. One of the things that we need for fundraising is we really need a unified board of directors for the whole Ramsdale, you know, because right now we have three different groups going to these funders. I don't know how much the Art Institute is raising fundraising-wise. I don't know how much the civic players are raising fundraising. I know they're doing it, how much they're doing. But if we could combine and provide a unified vision for them, I think we'd do much better. The other thing that we need a board of directors for, too, is that we need to make those connections, you know? If I'm a board of directors and I really care about the Ramsdale and want to support it, I have people that I'm going to talk to, and I'm going to say, hey, you know, this is really important to me, I think it should be important to you, and you have those connections. And that's the way you build that donor base. This annual giving campaign, this is still based off a list from 10 years ago from the restoration, that's what I'm using. I've cleaned that list up. We did one last year and again this year, but we need to expand that list. We need to have more people involved that are connected with the Ramsdale. Some of those are going to be through the civic players, through the Art Institute, and some through the presenting. That's really going to be key to going forward, is having that base of community members who really care about the Ramsdale or are connected and have the ability to support it. And that kind of, that ability, interest, and linkage is just so important, that you have people that are on your board, that are connected to your organization, that have the funds to support it, you know, that have the interest and are connected to the kinds of things that we have going on somehow. And once you get that group of people that are supporting you and are engaged with your organization, then you can start talking about major gifts and planned giving, because that's that ongoing relationship, you know, that you need to develop over time, and that's going to take some time to build. For 10 years, we haven't done anything, you know? Now we're starting, it's going to take some time to build that up again. And I think that's going to be one of the keys to keeping the Ramsdale open, is building that community support, not just for money, but also for programming, the kinds of things that they want to see. Brands, we did have a grant this past year for Glenn Miller, $1,300 of Richard Paul. Did apply for an CCF mini-grant, were successful, however. One of the things that, like with McCaca and for project grants and research grants, you have to be able to share, you have to be able to show, I'm sorry, community support. And that's why it's so important to have an engaged board of directors, that you can go to these organizations and say, hey, our community is really committed and involved in this, they are supporting this. Look at how they've donated, look at the time and effort they put into it. Those are some of the things that granting organizations want to see from us. Right now, it's Michael Terry applying for a grant. That ain't enough. You know, we have to have community support. We do have some deadlines coming up, depending on what we want to do in the coming year. Touring grant, June 30th, and you have to book so far in advance. And kind of things have been kind of up in the air with the market study and all the different things that have been going on. If we want to apply for those grants, we're going to have to, we're going to have to get it together pretty quickly. I'm going to switch over to year-to-date for the financial season. So far this year, we've had ticket sales of $15,000, rentals $12,000, resident rent $9,000, that's from the, from the Manastee Art Institute, Ingrid Bond, the civic players, Annette Jervisik, and then miscellaneous income of $2,046. Most of that was from the $2,000 that we took out of the restoration, the restoration endowment for repairs. And so that gave us total operational revenues of $39,116. The expenditures, performances, about $13,000 so far this fiscal year, operations $85,000. Total expenditures this year so far fiscal year, $99,000, so we're running about $60,000 in the whole, you know, and that's something we need to work on. City transfers in, $134,000, interest payments, $20,000, and then the principal on the roof and HVAC, $68,690 in expenditures this year. So back in January of last year, we felt that for fundraising, to understand whether the community had the capacity and the kind of fundraising that we needed, to also look at what is realistic for programming in a community this side, an RFP was put out. Johnson Consulting was hired at least in like July, I'm sorry, in June, they did do some interviews in July, and we haven't heard back from them yet. Not really sure what's going on. Betsy Evans for AES is here, so when we have questions, maybe she can give us some clarification to where we're at right now. But that's kind of a key of, you know, we spent a year, you know, looking for what direction makes the best sense, and so we've been kind of, kind of on hold for a year. And finally, here's some customer feedback. And I think this is, you know, it's been kind of a frustrating year for me personally, and I think for a lot of people associated with the Ramsdale, but I keep coming back to, I mean, this is what it's about. Even if just one person, always have a great time when I go, all the shows have been first class. And I think the shows that the civic players have been putting on, the shows that we've had at the Ramsdale, have been very good, and have been good experiences. And so, I mean, I think that's something that we can be proud of. And you can see the other comments. So that's, that's a high note I'd like to end on. So any questions that I can try to answer for you, please?
I have, Terry, Michael, the feasibility study, where are we with that? Obviously, we're covering up on some programming deadlines, what, what's, I mean, they conducted that back in June, we're suddenly almost past that, so. Yeah, Betsy?
Yes, and I'm Betsy Evans with the Alliance for Economic Success. And Tim Urban has actually been spearheading this program, but he's in Florida right now. So anyway, the consultant was selected, and they had, we had a conference call with them in September, because we felt as though it wasn't moving quite at the speed of, as what we needed to happen. And they, we again went through the expected deliverables, and it was good conference, and they said, yes, we were on target, we're going to, we'll deliver, we'll deliver. As of this point, they have provided a partial product. The two major outcomes of this feasibility study were, number one, to recommend a business model in which the Ramsdale Theater could become more self-sustaining. So that was number one. And number two was a governance structure that would facilitate the ongoing sustainability of the Ramsdale. Those two products have yet to be received. And so I do know that Tim Urban has a conference call tomorrow with Johnson Consulting regarding these two missing pieces, the largest components, the actual meat of this feasibility study. And then we go forward from there, either they provide the services or we're going to, we're going to need to do, go to Plan B, find a different consultant, or try to do something else. But I do understand the frustration, this has been a year now. You have upcoming budgets, and Terry's got programming to do, Mike, I'm sorry, Mike has, you know, his programming, and we share your frustration.
Have the consultants been paid in full?
They have not been paid in full, and that is a topic for discussion tomorrow. Number one is if they cannot fulfill the promise, that they, number one, will not receive the remainder of the money. And number two, perhaps if we need to seek another consultant, they need to reimburse.
Thank you for the update.
Just a quick question. Would you have any time limits? Do you have any idea, are we just going to go day to day, or do we have a goal we're trying to reach, a time?
You know, at this, at this, at this point, I mean, it is, time is of the essence. And so I don't know if there's a 30, 60-day time limit, but I think there should be. I think we need to set a reasonable deadline that this can be performed, so that, again, you're able to consider it when you're talking about your budget, and Mike is able to consider it when he's looking at rental spaces and programming. I can, I will ask Tim about that, and I think that definitely needs to be a topic.
As well as the feedback, what I think I hear you said, the report is there, but it's just, it's not, it's not put together the way reports should be put together, is that what you're saying?
There have been portions that have been delivered, they've looked at some of the demographics, they've looked at some things, but again, the two, the two key components that we need are that governance structure and the business model, and neither one of those have been addressed. And so without that, I feel it's essentially, right.
Nothing. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mike, I have a question about rent. You indicate the rent, 20% of ticket price for Civic Players, and $2,400, and I know previously, when we had the Ramsdale governing board, we were, were looking at rent. Those are actually a small percent of the market value for rent. Are we getting market value for the other rental activities that we have there, for the weddings, receptions, and others?
I think we are for the weddings, and for the, like the conservatory of dance, we are getting market rate based on, on reciprocal, yes, we are, we are. Now with the, with the classes, you know, with the kind of, the residential, I mean, renting the space out for $10, you know, for a class, that's a pretty good rate, that's a pretty good rate. And that has to do with leases, and we've kind of, we put together leases when the RGA was put together, but we didn't have any meaningful conversation, and then we kind of just put it off because of the market study, and how we want to, the business model, and how we want to operate. But that's something that needs to be addressed sooner than later.
Okay, then the opera, we were showing that we had 10 broadcasts and a gross income of $997. What do those broadcasts cost us? Are they a set number, or do they vary?
We pay half, so like if we sell $100 worth of tickets, we pay the men-opera $50, and we keep $50. And so that $976 is what we got to keep.
So there's no front-end costs, it just split the ticket sales right down the middle?
Right. There is, every, occasionally, they have a grant fee that has something to do, and that's usually like $100, so sometimes we take a little bite there, but most typically, it's half and half. Now, having said that, that doesn't include overhead costs, that doesn't include my job or cleaning or anything else, so.
How about advertising costs? Because I know you advertise these broadcasts.
That does include advertising costs being taken out, so I include that.
Okay, so this is a final figure?
That is the final figure.
Okay.
Yeah, any advertising costs, or, I do all the tech stuff myself, so it's not like we're hiring anything, we have a volunteer box office and volunteer house manager, so that's all.
Okay, thank you. And when, when we look at our operating expenditures, year-to-date of $99,000, does that include $10,000 for the market study?
It does.
So that's already, that's already in there?
Yes, I just broke up the performance, the performance numbers for operations, just to see that, is that something special, that may be something you want to keep pursuing, and maybe something you don't want to keep pursuing, yes.
Okay. I guess the only other question I've got, when you talked about fundraising and all your efforts for fundraising and campaign, and we look at the Civic Players and the Art Institute, they're not necessarily raising funds for the rent, are they? Are they raising funds for their organization when they do their campaigns?
They're raising funds for their organizations. And I'm not, I'm not really sure what their campaigns are, I haven't seen them, I, I mean, they have like some of the envelopes, and so I know they're setting them out, but I, you know, it's like I haven't necessarily gotten a letter from them, I'm not really sure what they're going to.
So we've actually got three fundraising efforts that are separate?
We do, we do, we do.
That was a world of confusion, I know we had the work, or the kind of strategic planning session, it was John Q. Public would write a donation to the Civic Players Club, meaning that they're making contribution to the Ramsdale, which is not the case. And same thing with the, the Art Institute, and collaboration, or at least a unified campaign may be helpful in that respect. I think that goes along with creating some unified structure and governing body, and I think that's one of our struggles right now, so.
And it is confusing, you know, I just received a donation for the Civic Players in a City of, City of Manistee Ramsdale immodul, you know, and so.
I would assume it's going to the Ramsdale.
Well, we're going to give it to the Civic Players, because it's, it's obviously, once I opened it up, it was clear that it was for them, not for, for the City of Ramsdale. But that just illustrates, you know, some of the confusion, and I think people think of the Ramsdale as a big organization. In a lot of ways, when they think of the Ramsdale, they think of the Civic Players, they've been a dominant player for a long time, they have been. I mean, and they do a lot of shows, they're there most of the time, so when, a lot of people, you know, as far as branding goes, you know, they're thinking of the Civic Players, because that's what goes on within the busy months of the year.
Absolutely.
I'm doing my programming in, you know, January, February, March, well, it's a little quieter.
I have a question for you. Going forward for your next fiscal year budget, are you going to, are you going to make any changes as far as their rent, is that going to be, is that going to go up a bit?
Well, you know, that's something that I really wanted to take care of last year, when we still had the RGA, we didn't get very far. We kind of have put that off on purpose because of the business model. You know, I think the rent, personally, I think the rent should be market rate with a discount for the much, as much as they use it. Can they really afford that? I don't know, you know? And so there needs to be some negotiation, some talk about business model, because I would really hate to see the Civic Players, or the Art, the Art Institute not be part of the Ramsdale. But at the same time, if we can't find a way to finance it, you know, whether through city support or personal support, some choices have to be made, and I think we're coming down with those choices being made. You know, either we need to get a unified group together that, you know, supports the whole picture, or we need to go to that property management, you know, model. You know, if you're going to use the space, this is the rent, if you can afford it, great, and if you can't, I guess we need to hustle, you know, find somebody who can.
Is it percent?
I hate to be so blunt about it, but.
Is it percent of the ticket sale, I'm sorry, is it percent of the ticket sales kind of standard across the board, or is that just something we create?
You know, in looking at other organizations, usually it's a flat rate, sometimes it's a flat rate plus percent of ticket sales. It's a little different here too, because usually, a facility like the Ramsdale would provide ticketing and tech support people, where the Civic Players are providing their own, they're doing their own ticketing system, which is another thing of, it's kind of confusing when customers call, you know, if the Civic Players have the box office, they can't sell tickets to my, my stuff, you know, and when I have the ticket office, like, you know, on an opera, I can't sell tickets to their stuff. Well, the customer doesn't care anything about that stuff, they just want to buy a ticket, you know, they don't want to have to deal with that, that kind of stuff. And so those are some of the issues that we need to, that we need to resolve. I think I might have gone off track today, answer your question.
No, you didn't. I, and I just want to say, I appreciate all that you do, I have been involved, as you know, for quite a while, back when we had the first 33-day meeting, a lot of frustration going on, and I appreciate you hanging in there and doing the best you can.
Well, most organizations, it's, you know, they're, they're part of a whole group, so when they're fundraising, you know, those ticket sales, that's all part, thrown in the big pot, along with the rest of money, along with the rest of the support. That's not what's going on here, we basically have three separate organizations, you know, three different businesses, and if you include like weddings and presenting, four or five different businesses that come on.
So I hear you're right, we have three organizations running the rent.
Well, yeah.
Trying to.
Trying to, yeah. Well, they're separate, I mean, they are, they're separate, so far. But we're very interdependent, you know, frankly, I don't know that one can live without the other. You know, the Art Institute, they have all their exhibits when the Civic Players have an event, because they get traffic from those people attending that play, you know, so a lot of their business comes from that. Nothing wrong with that, that's great, but we're much more independent than I think we realize.
So just so that I understand this properly, if, if, I mean, the city obviously takes up the biggest bulk of the expenses, which is not a 501(c), or whatever it is, 501(3(c). It would be obviously very, a good thing to really help Civic Players and the Art Institute, those two organizations, get as much fundraising help as possible.
Yes.
Because then we could raise the rent.
Yes, absolutely. And we also have Friends of the Ramsdale, which is a 501(c)(3) in the annual campaign, that's where that money is going to. One of the things, one of the opportunities in granting, is that we can get operating grants, you know, from McCaca, like $30,000 to $50,000, but we have to have a board of directors in the organizations that's, you know, that's involved. So like the Civic Players, if we could work with them and get on the same page, we could work with them to apply for that grant, and they have a potential for $30,000 to $50,000 a year, that would help a lot.
That would?
That would help a lot.
I appreciate the presentation and all the work that you do, I hear nothing but wonderful comments about the Ramsdale Theater itself and the programming. I did attend the Glenn Miller, and that was an awesome event. You saw people from all ages, from young to older people there enjoying that program. It'd be interesting now that you've been involved a couple of years now, looking at the different programs that you've had, looking at what types bring in the majority of the people, and looking at more programming, I guess, but also knowing you need funding to get that type of program in here, so. But I think you're doing a wonderful job, and I enjoy the programs that you do offer, and I think a lot of people do, and even the people, even though they're not going, they see the Ramsdale as an important part of the community, and they're really happy to have it, so I appreciate all the work that you've put into it, and everyone else involved with it.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it. And we've learned a lot, and we'd like to put that learning to use, you know, make changes meaningful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to concerns and comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment in municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens and tenants shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes, and letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anyone who'd like to make a comment? So now we'll move on to officials and staffs. Your Honor.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Assistant Andrew.
Just like I said, I've been a majority, and I've been here out and about, telling everybody, it's like I'm on a treadmill, I'm going all the time, which is good, because I have a very steep learning curve, so, city's helped out, and it's got a lot of meetings with the people that I meet to get out and establish a great relationship with, so, we've been doing that, and continue to do that going forward.
Assistant Turner?
Good morning, Your Honor.
My name is Drucker.
Good morning, Your Honor.
DPW?
Good morning, Your Honor.
Assistant engineer?
Good morning, Your Honor.
Counselor Robert Bean?
Yeah, I would just like to wish everybody a good year, I'm looking forward to working harder on council, I think it'll be a big change year for us. I would also like to just put in a plug for Manistee Neighborhood Watch, which is a group that was started on Facebook, and we still really need captains that are willing to serve their time and, and, you know, be part of the Neighborhood Watch group, so I just want to put a public plug in for that, I think it's necessary that we try to develop a closer relationship with all of our neighbors to help the police with crime.
Counselor Marv Zonsky?
Yes, I do. Mr. Makula, could you bring us up to date on the ice skating rink, what's going on, what's happened, what's taking place?
Sure. The bad news is that the warm weather's over, and it's getting cold outside, but the good news is we're, we're able to make ice now. So this week, we installed the liner in the boards for the ice skating rink, we put enough water in it to cover the liner, so that's safe. We actually built over an inch of ice overnight, just last night. So when it gets solid enough, we'll start layering that up until we get substantial ice, and then we'll work with the teen center to open it up and let the kids skate. So it's really weather-dependent at this time, but we're building ice now.
Unfortunately, this weekend's supposed to be warmer and raining.
Thank you.
We purchased a Johnny Red Cloud over here.
We did. When we purchased this entire kit from, from the company, the only item that we did not purchase as part of the kit was the liner. And we bought a liner local at a, close to a 50% reduction in cost. The only downfall of that liner was that it had to be seamed. So the seams we found last year leaked substantially, and we had a hard time keeping water in it and letting it, keeping water in it long enough to freeze, and so some of that liner got exposed, and kids were on it before they should have been, and so some of that liner actually got holes in it. But the bigger concern was that the seams did not seal. So right now, we purchased the liner from Ice Rink, which is where we bought the rest of the equipment, and the United Way, as you probably read in the paper, granted over $1,800 towards that liner, total cost was about $3,200 for the liner. It's, it's a more substantial material, it's one-piece, and so we've checked it the last two days, and it doesn't seem to be leaking anywhere, so it's kind of like a bathtub that's, that's just waiting to freeze. If we do get the warm, warm spell in it, and it thaws, the water stays in there, so, and when it gets cold that night, it refreezes.
Well, I want to thank all the guys, they, they work hard doing it, they have enough to do as it is, and they always try to fit that in, good job. I'm looking forward to the ice skating.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty neat to see everybody out there last year, so hopefully we get some good, good months of skating in yet.
Is it, is it clearly posted over there that it's not open at this time?
We did post it, all, all around it, yes, sir.
There's signs there with the cones, signs saying stay off it.
If, if you go on it, you know you're not supposed to be on it at this point.
Hey Jeff, just have one question, on the recycle paper and metal and such, where are we with relocating that?
After council approved that plan moving forward, we started bidding out for fencing, and as you know, the council purchasing policy requires three competitive bids. We spent two months trying to get the third bid, and we're not able to, so we finally took the two bids that we had to the city manager, the interim city manager who approved it, and then we got into the scheduling of, of our contractors. So to date, they've been able to install the posts, they're finishing up a large project up in Boeing City, but then we'll still be able to come back and hang the, the actual fencing to the posts, just as soon as they clear up their schedule. So as soon as we get all that in place, we've got the signs designed for it, we'll have a sign that's at the public works notifying the public that it's been relocated, and then we've got some signs that are directional to get them over to that, that location, and then a sign that kind of announces that it's the recycling center, so we've got that in progress, but really just waiting on the fencing is the biggest thing at this point.
I'm net, Scott's going to be lighted also, correct?
Correct.
And with cameras, are we going to have any cameras?
That's our intention, yes.
That just answered my question, I was down looking at the poles, I see they have poles at the end, I just wondered where the, where the camera's going to go, where the lights going to go.
There's a light post there, that's there now, and so it'll be lit through that, and then we intend to like, there, install the camera from that, that same fixture as well.
I think they're well on our way, it shouldn't take a few long, huh?
Well, and actually, we, the, the company was, was kind enough to get down, they broke off the project that they're working on to get down here before the frost got in the ground to set those posts, so at least they could do the rest. And we have actually two fencing projects, one at the recycling center, but then in this year's budget, we also have fencing up at the Maywood Tank to enclose all of our equipment and generators there, and so we kind of negotiated that we would certainly hold off on that one till spring, as long as we could get this one done now.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Assistant Ms.?
Good morning, Your Honor.
Yes, Assistant Ms.?
Good morning, Your Honor.
Assistant Mayor Protonen, does he?
Yeah, two things, one, I would like to reinforce Councilmember Bean in the Neighborhood Watch program, and what I didn't hear though, is how do people sign up?
Oh, that's a really good question, Eric. Actually, they have to sign up through Sergeant Bruce.
Okay.
They should contact him, and he would give them the information, and it's recommended that they limit it to two to, two blocks, it's a really kind of a two-block area, so, you know, if you can get your neighbors together a couple of blocks to do this, you should go see him, and he'll give you all the materials.
Okay, thank you, helps for the public to hear that too. The other thing I wanted to do is just congratulate both Chief Bachman, Sergeant Bruce, and Mr. Makula on the ISO certification, that's a pretty, a great accomplishment for the city to go from a nine down to a six, is that correct, is where?
Six to a five.
Six to a five, excuse, but we started at a nine like years ago, right? And now we're at a, at a five, so that's a great accomplishment for the efforts put forth from that, and I, I, Chief Bachman, Jeff, and Sergeant Bruce as well, so thank you for your efforts. Please pass that like, appreciate it, and continue to do it. That's all.
If nothing further, Jeff, you can move on.